राम हरे राम 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 हरे हरे हे कृष्णा धनुष प्रणाम स्टोल देवी बूजीस थैंक यू फॉर जॉइनिंग इन फॉर अवर स्टडी सेशन टुडे लेट्स स्टार्ट विथ प्रेयर्स नमो विष्णु पाठाया कृष्ण प्रेष्ठाय भूतले श्रीमते भक्ति रेडांत स्वामी नितिनामीने नमस्ते सरस्वते देवे गौरवाणी प्रचारिने नरविशेष शुन्यवादी पास्चात्य देव शतारिने नमो महावदन्याय कृष्ण प्रेम प्रधायते कृष्णाय कृष्ण चैतन्य नामने गौरतुषेन महा पंचरत्व आत्मकम कृष्णम भक्त रूप स्वरूपकम भक्त आवतारम भक्ताक्यम नमामी भक्त शक्तिकम हे कृष्णा करुणा सिंधो दीनबंधो जगतपते गोपेश गोपिका कांता राधा कांत नमो सुदे तक्तकांचना गौरांगी राधे वृंदावनी श्वरी रश्महानो सुदे देवी प्रणाम आमीन हरि प्रिय पांचल पत्र रूप यश्चा कृपा सिंधु पिया एवं चपटीता नाम पाहनी व्यो वैष्णवेव्यो नमो नम जय सृष्टि कृष्ण चैतन्य प्रभु नित्यनंदा शियाद्वैत कदाधार श्रीवासादी गौरवकत्तविल्ला हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे हरे गौर चंद्राय राधिकाय तराले कृष्णाय कृष्ण भक्ताय तत्वकताय नमो नम मुकम करोति वाचालम अंगुम लंगयते गिरीम यत्क्रपातम हमने श्रीगुरु नित्यातारिणम अरमानंद मातवम श्री कृष्ण चैतन्य ईश्वरम हरि ओम तत्सत हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे हरे गौरवे गौर चंद्राय राधिकाय तराले कृष्णाय कृष्ण भक्ताय तत्वकताय नमो नम मुकम करोति वाचालम अंगुम लंगयते गिरीम यत्क्रपातम हमने श्रीगुरु नित्यातारिणम अरमानंद मातवम श्री कृष्ण चैतन्य ईश्वरम हरि ओम तत्सत हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा कृष्ण कृष्णा हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे हरे सर हरे कृष्णा डियर देवी बूजीस थैंक यू फॉर जॉइनिंग इन सो वी आर कंटिन्यूइंग विथ चैप्टर नंबर 7 ऑफ डी बघवत गीता सो वी डू डॉट फ्रॉम वर्स नंबर 20 राइट ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय सो हरे कृष्णा सो इन चैप्टर नंबर 17 वी बीन सीइंग इन डी लास्ट कपल ऑफ वर्सेस बीन सीइंग व्हाट आर डी फोर काइंड्स ऑफ पीपल हूं डोंट सरेंडर तू डी लॉर्ड नमाम दुष्कृतिनो मूढ़ा प्रपद ज्ञान ते नराधमा मूढ़ा नराधमा माया अप्रिता ज्ञाना दोस्त जोस माइंड इस टोलन बाय इल्यूशन जोस इंटेलिजेंस इस टोलन बाय इल्यूशन असुरम भावम आश्चर्य तहुपार टिक डी कैरक्टर ऑफ डीमंस राइट नमाम दुष्कृतिनो मूढ़ा मूढ़ा वे वेरी क्लेरली वी सो व्हाट इस डी मीनिंग ऑफ मूढ़ा इस आस डोंकी राइट बिकॉज़ वी वर्क सो हार्ड फॉर सम काइंड ऑफ प्लेजर विच इस नॉट इवन विच इस नॉट इवन यू आर इन अश्योर तू डी प्लेजर एंड डी प्लेजर इस ओनली कीप्स मूविंग लाइक डी मिराज इन अन डिजर्ट राइट आ एंड दें नराधमा नराधमा मींस लोवेस्ट अमांग माइंडकाइंड आ डेट मींस वन हूं डोंट अंडरस्टैंड व्हाट इस तू बी डॉन व्हाट इस नॉट तू बी डॉन आस पर डी स्क्रिप्चर्स राइट सो दोस्त काइंड ऑफ पीपल आर लोवेस्ट अमांग माइंडकाइंड डी प्रिपेयर फॉर डेयर नेक्स्ट बॉडी विच इस नॉट अन वेरी विच इस नॉट अन वेरी नाइस थिंग तू हैपन राइट बिकॉज़ इफ वी मिस यूटिलाइज अवर ह्यूमन फॉर माफ लाइट दें वी ग्लाइड डाउन राइट सो सो इन दिस वे प्रोपा एक्सप्लेन डी फोर काइंड ऑफ पीपल हूं डोंट सरेंडर तू कृष्णा वेरी नाइसली एंड दें इन डी नेक्स्ट वर्स कृष्णा हिमसेल्फ चेल्स डी फोर काइंड ऑफ पीपल हूं सरेंडर तू मी जना सुकृतिनो अर्जुना डी प्रीवियस वर्स विस दुष्कृतिना एंड दीज आर सुकृतिना स्पाइस पीपल हूं सरेंडर उन तू मी चतुर्विदा वजन तेमम जना सुकृतिनो अर्जुना आर्थार्थो जिज्ञासी आर्थार्थी ज्ञानी च भरतर शव राइट एंड दें कृष्णा हिमसेल्फ सेज डेट ऑल ऑफ दीज पीपल जो इस मोस्ट डियर तू मी डी वन हूं विल्स ज्ञानी वन हूं सरेंडर्स तू मी नोइंग माय पोजीशन आस डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड हेड एंड दें इन वर्स नंबर 19 कृष्णा सेज बहुनाम जन्मनाम अंते ज्ञानवान मां प्रपद ये ते वासुदेव सर्वमिति समात्मा सु दुर्लभा आफ्टर मेनी 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 लाइफटाइम्स वन डिकम फॉर्चुनेट तू अंडरस्टैंड डेट वासुदेवा कृष्णा इस एवरीथिंग राइट इफ वी अंडरस्टैंड वासुदेवा एंड डेपोज्शनल सर्विस उन तू कृष्णा दें देयर इस नथिंग एल्स डेट रिमींस तू बी नोन देयर इस नो नीड तू तू बायहार्ड डी स्क्रिप्चर्स तू बायहार्ड डी वर्सेस राइट डिसेंट मैटर यू ओनली नीड तू इंप्लीमेंट डी इंस्ट्रक्शंस ऑफ अवर आचार्यास कमिंग थ्रू डी वेदिस्क्रिप्चर्स इन अवर लाइफ एंड डेट इस अन पर्पस ऑफ डी स्टडी ऑफ वेदिक स्क्रिप्चर्स अलरेड लेट्स मोव हेड फ्रॉम 7.20 ओके लेट मी शेयर मी स्क्रीन देवी बूजीस कैन रेज योर हैंड्स इफ यू डिलक तू रीड एनी पर्टिकुलर वर्स इन अवर सीरीज ऑफ वर्सेस टुडे फ्रॉम 7.20 तू व्हाट वी आर एबल तू कंप्लीट टुडे 7 पॉइंट 20 ओके प्रपद ज्ञान ते अन्य देवता तम तम नियमम आस्थाय प्रकृत्या नियता स्वया ओके होल रीड या विजय लक्ष्मी सॉरी
यस महता जी हरे कृष्णा धनुष प्रणाम
ओहो फॉर सम रीजन आई एम नॉट एबल तू हियर ओके वैन सेकंड महता जी होल ऑन जस्ट वैन सेकंड देवी बूजीस आई आई हैव सम इश्यू विथ डी लैपटॉप ऑडियो लेट मी एक्जिट फ्रॉम हियर राम राम हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा कृष्ण कृष्णा हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे हरे हैव मै ऑडिबल हरे कृष्णा ओके फाइन सो लेट मी शेयर मी स्क्रीन अगेन ना फिर आई तू हियर सम्मान रीड ना या प्रश्न बालो कन्या महता जी प्लीज अनम्यूट एंड री लेट मी सी आई कैन हियर यू
यस महता जी हरे कृष्णा कम इस तैयत गैना ना प्रपद ज्ञान ते ना देवता तम तम नियम आस्थाय प्रकृत्या नियता स्वया सिनोनिम्स कम इस बाय डिजायर बाय डिजायर तैयत वेरियस तैयत वेरियस हत्ता डिप्राइड ऑफ जना नॉलेज अन्य तू अदर डेवता डेमीगोर्स तम तम कोरस्पॉन्डिंग नित्यम रेगुलर रेगुलेशंस रेगुलेशंस आस्थाय फॉलोइंग प्रकृत्या बाय नेचर नियता कंट्रोल्ड स्वया बाय देयर ऑन ट्रांसलेशन ट्रांसलेशन बाय श्रील प्रोपा श्रील प्रोपा दीजिए दोस्त हो इंटेलिजेंस हैस बीन जोस इंटेलिजेंस हैस बीन स्टोलन बाय मटेरियल डिजायर सरेंडर उन तू डेमीगोर्स एंड फॉलो डी पर्टिकुलर रोल पर्टिकुलर रूल्स एंड रेगुलेशंस ऑफ वरशिप अकॉर्डिंग तू डेयर ऑन नेचर पर्पट दोस्त हूं आर फ्रीड फ्रॉम ऑल मटेरियल्स कंटेमिनेशन सरेंडर उन तू डी सुप्रीम लॉर्ड एंड इंगेज इन हिस डेपोज्शनल सर्विस आस लोंग एस डी मटेरियल कंटेमिनेशन इस नॉट कंप्लीटली वाश्ड ऑफ दे आर बाय नेचर नॉन देवी बूजीस बट इवन दोस्त हूं हैव मटेरियल डिजायर्स एंड हूं रिसोर्ट तू डी सुप्रीम लॉर्ड आर नॉट सो मच अट्रैक्टेड बाय एक्सटर्नल नेचर बिकॉज़ ऑफ अप्रोचिंग डी राइट गोल डी सून बिकॉज़ दे सून बिकम फ्री फ्रॉम ऑल मटेरियल लस्ट इन श्रीमत भागवतम इट इस रिकमेंडेड डेट वेदर वन इस अन प्योर डेवीटी एंड इस फ्री फ्रॉम ऑल मटेरियल डिजायर और इस फुल ऑफ मटेरियल डिजायर्स और डिजायर्स ब्रेशन फ्रॉम मटेरियल्स कंटेमिनेशन ही शुड ही शुड इन ऑल केसेस सरेंडर तू वासुदेवा एंड वरशिप हिम आस स्टेटेड इन डी भागवत 2.3.10 अक्का महा सर्व महता जी प्लीज थैंक यू महता जी लेस इंटेलिजेंट पीपल हूं हैव लॉस्ट डी स्पिरिचुअल सेंस टेक शेल्टर ऑफ डेमीगोर्स फॉर इमीडिएट फुलफिलमेंट ऑफ मटेरियल डिजायर्स जनरली सच पीपल डोंट गो तू सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड हेड बिकॉज़ दे आर इन डी लोवर मोड्स ऑफ नेचर इग्नोरेंस एंड पेशेंट एंड देयर फॉर वरशिप वेरियस डेमीगोर्स फॉलोइंग डी रूल्स एंड रेगुलेशंस ऑफ वरशिप दे आर सatisfied डी वरशिपर्स ऑफ डेमीगोर्स आर मोटिवेटेड बाय स्मॉल डिजायर्स एंड डोंट नो हाउ तू रिच डी सुप्रीम गोल बट डी डेवीटी ऑफ डी सुप्रीम लॉर्ड इस नॉट मिसगाइडेड बिकॉज़ इन वेदिक लिटरेचर देयर आर रिकमेंडेड रिकमेंडेशन फॉर वरशिपिंग डिफरेंट गोद्स फॉर डिफरेंट पर्सेस फॉर एग्जांपल डिजीज मैन इस रिकमेंडेड तू वरशिप डी सन दोस्त हूं आर नॉट डेवीटीज ऑफ डी लॉर्ड थिंक डेट फॉर सर्टेन पर्पस डेमीगोर्स आर बेटर थन डी सुप्रीम लॉर्ड बट अन प्योर डेवीटी नोज डेट एंड फॉर सर्टेन पर्पस डेमीगोर्स आर बेटर थन डी सुप्रीम लॉर्ड बट अन प्योर डेवीटी नोज डेट डी सुप्रीम लॉर्ड कृष्णा इस डी मैटर ऑफ मास्टर ऑफ ऑल इन डी चैतन्य चरित्र आदि 5.1 5.142 इट इस सेड एकले एकले तस्वार कृष्णा एकले ईश्वर कृष्णा आर सब ब्रत्या ओनली डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड हेड कृष्णा इस मास्टर एंड ऑल अदर्स आर सर्वंस देयर फॉर अन प्योर डेवीटी नेवर गो तू डेमीगोर्स फॉर सatis्फेक्शन ऑफ हिस मटेरियल नीड्स ही डिपेंड्स ऑन डी सुप्रीम लॉर्ड एंड डी प्योर डेवीटी इस सatisfied विथ व्हाटएवर ही गिव्स
या सो एकले ईश्वर कृष्णा आर सब ब्रत्या डेट मींस देयर इस ओनली वन लॉर्ड एकले ईश्वर कृष्णा आर सब ब्रत्या ब्रत्या मींस सर्वेंट राइट एवरीवन एल्स इस डी सर्वेंट ऑफ डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड हेड राइट प्रोपा गिव्स एन एग्जांपल हियर ऑफ सम्मान हूं डिजीज आई कैन वरशिप एंड विश वरशिपिंग डी सन गॉड विकेन रिमेंबर डेट कृष्णा इस डी कृष्णा आईस आर डी सन इन डी मून इसेंटेड सो दें इवन दें वी आर प्रेयिंग यू नो इट कैन बी इन रिलेशन तू डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड हेड राइट बिकॉज़ आई थिंक वी हैव शिवलिंगा इन अवर अल्टर इन डी गुरु तत्व इन डी गुरु परंपरा लेवल राइट सो दें वी आर ऑफरिंग आई नो वी नो डेट शिवा इस इन रिलेशन तू कृष्णा इस शिवा इस वैष्णवानम यता शंभू शिवा इस रिलेटेड तू लॉर्ड शिवा इस डी ग्रेटेस्ट वैष्णवा सो इन डेट वे लाइक इट वांड तू इट्स एन अफेंस तू तू से डेट ब्रह्मा एंड शिवा इंडिपेंडेंट नाम तू लॉर्ड विष्णु डी मॉर्निंग वी टेल डी 10 अफेंस इस डी ओनली नाम वेयर वी से तू कंसीडर डी नाम डी डेमीगोर्स लाइक लॉर्ड शिवा लॉर्ड ब्रह्मा तू बी इक्वल तू इंडिपेंडेंट डी नाम तू लॉर्ड विष्णु इस एन अफेंस बट दें वी नो डेट लॉर्ड लॉर्ड शिवा इस वैष्णवानम यकाश शंभू इस डी ग्रेटेस्ट वैष्णवा राइट एंड वी अलसो नो सर्वर पास्ट टाइम्स लाइक शिवा डायरेक्टेड वन पर्सन हिस डेवीटी हु वो आज डेम फॉर डी बेस्ट थिंग व्हाटएवर यू हैव डी बेस्ट यू गिव मी डायरेक्टली इन तू सनातन गोस्वामी हु गिव हिम हरे कृष्णा मां मंत्रा हु गिव हिम हरीना राइट सो इन डेट वे डिपेंड्स ऑन अवर मूड वुमेवर वी आर प्रेयिंग राइट एंड इट सेड डेट यू नो फॉर सेल्फ प्रेसर्वेशन व्हेन वी प्रे तू डी लॉर्ड डेट इस नॉट कंसीडर्ड सकामा लाइक फॉर एग्जांपल ग्राहपदी राइट शिवा वास शिवा वास डिसरोब इन डी असेंबली ऑफ हस्तिनापुर राइट आते डेट टाइम यू नो शिवा ट्राई तू डू एवरीथिंग डेट वास डेट वास डेट को बी पॉसिबल फॉर हर फाइनली शिवा सरेंडर तू डी लॉर्ड ओ कृष्णा ओ गोविंदा मातवा एंड कृष्णा वास नॉट इवन आते हस्तिनापुर आते टाइम कृष्णा वास इन द्वारका बट येड कृष्णा इन डी फॉर्म ऑफ सो मच ऑफ क्लॉथ राइट सो मच ऑफ क्लॉथ वास देयर फॉर ग्राहपरी इसेंटेड सो फॉर सेल्फ प्रेसर्वेशन फॉर सेल्फ प्रोटेक्शन ऑफ कोर्स होम बी वी अप्रोच अगर थन कृष्णा डेवीटी ऑलवेज अप्रोचेस कृष्णा ओनली फॉर एवरीथिंग राइट एंड सच काइंड ऑफ यू नो प्रेयर फॉर सेल्फ प्रेसर्वेशन और सेल्फ प्रोटेक्शन इस नॉट कंसीडर्ड सकामा भक्त राइट सकामा मींस वी हैव वांट मटेरियल ऑब्जेक्ट्स और सेंस ग्रेटिफिकेशन डेट इस वे वी आर अप्रोचिंग डी देवता राइट डेट इस वे इट सेड अकाम सर्वकाम व मुक्षिकाम उदार एवं इफ वी हैव डी डिजायर फॉर अटेनिंग मुक्षा और व्हाटएवर वी अवर डिजायर वी शुड वरशिप डी सुप्रीम लॉर्ड बिकॉज़ इन डेट वे अवर डिजायर विल बी फुलफियर अवर डिजायर मेयर मेयर वी नॉट बी फुलफिल्ड बाय डी लॉर्ड बट डी प्यूरिफिकेशन ऑफ डेट ऑफ डेट विल डेफिनेटली हैपन राइट सो सम्हान वी विल गेट प्यूरिफाइड ऑफ दोस्त डिजायर्स विच आर नॉट प्रोड्यूसिव फॉर डी प्रैक्टिस ऑफ भक्ति राइट सच काइंड ऑफ डिजायर्स कृष्णा विल रिमूव प्रोवाइडेड वी आर सरेंडर तू डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड हेड एंड वी में नॉट इवन फाइंड डी नीड फॉर डेट दोस्त काइंड ऑफ डिजायर्स तू बी फुलफिल्ड अलरेड सो लेट्स मोव फॉरवर्ड सो डी डी तू इंपॉर्टेंट पॉइंट्स फ्रॉम हियर आर वुमेवर वी वरशिप राइट वी वरशिप डेम इन रिलेशन तू डी सुप्रीम लॉर्ड नोइंग वेल डेट डेवीटीज ऑफ डी लॉर्ड नोइंग वेल डेयर एजेंट्स एंड रिप्रेसिडेंट्स ऑफ डी लॉर्ड ऑफ डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड कृष्णा सेकंडली व्हाटएवर डिजायर्स वी हैव राइट डी गोपी इस अलसो वरशिप ताक्यानी देवी बिकॉज़ वी वांट तू गेट कृष्णा आस हसबैंड सो इफ वी वांट तू गेट कृष्णा यू कैन वरशिप एनीबॉडी वी कैन वरशिप डी लॉर्ड वी कैन वरशिप लॉर्ड शिवा एंड आज डेम आई नो प्लीज गिव मी डिवोशन एंड डी लॉर्ड स्वीट ऑफ कृष्णा बिकॉज़ लॉर्ड शिवा आश्चितोष राइट होवर आचार्य एक्सप्लेन डेट डी मोड ऑफ प्रेयर अलसो इस बेस्ट व्हेन वी फॉलोइंग डी मोड ऑफ डी वैष्णव आचार्यास राइट डी वैष्णव आचार्य आप तोड़ यू नो डी मॉर्निंग प्रोग्राम स्टार्टिंग विथ मंगलारती तू तू स्टडी अवश्य भागवतम तू प्रसादम दो डेट इस डी नॉर्मल मूड एंड प्रेयर ऑफ डी वैष्णवा वी फॉलो अवर आचार्यास राइट बट वी डोंट डिसरेस्पेक्ट एनी एनी देवता वी नो डेम इन रिलेशन तू सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ डेट दे आर वरशिपर्स ऑफ डी लॉर्ड दे सर्व डी लॉर्ड दे आर एडमिनिस्ट्रेटर्स ऑफ डी लॉर्ड एंड वी गिव डेम डी एडिक्वेंट रिस्पेक्ट या सो इन डेट मोड वी वी रिस्पेक्ट डी देवता बट वी वरशिप डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड हेड लॉर्ड श्री कृष्णा ओके लेट्स मोव फॉरवर्ड टेक्स्ट नंबर 21 ओके होल रीड सिंधु महता जी गो हेड
हे कृष्णा प्रणाम महता जी टेक्स्ट 21
या यो यो याम याम तनुम भक्त हरि बोल महता जी आर यू देयर
यस महता जी या या टेक्स्ट 21 याम याम विच्छव तनुम फॉर्म ऑफ डेमीगोर्ट भक्त है डेवीटी श्रद्धया विथ फेथ अर्चितुम तू वरशिप विच्छती डिजायर्स तस्य तस्य टोकिंग अचलाम स्टडी श्रद्धाम फेथ ताम डेट एवा शोली विद दामी गिव अहम ट्रांसलेशन एंड प्रॉपर वेस्ट डिवाइन ग्रेस शिला प्रोपा शिला प्रोपा कीजिए आई मैन एवरीवन्स हार्ट आस डी सुपर सोल आस सून इस वन डिजायर तू वरशिप सम डेमीगोर्ट आई मेक इस फेथ स्टडी सो डेट वी कैन डिवोट हिमसेल्फ तू डेट पर्टिकुलर डेटी प्रॉपर गॉड इस गिवन इंडिपेंडेंस तू एवरीवन देयर फॉर इफ अन पर्सन डिजायर तू हैव मटेरियल एंजॉयमेंट एंड वांट वेरी सेंसीली तू हैव सच फैसिलिटीज फ्रॉम डी मटेरियल डेमीगोर्ट्स डी सुप्रीम लॉर्ड आस सुपर फूल इन एवरीवन्स हार्ट अंडरस्टैंड्स एंड गिव्स फैसिलिटीज तू सच पर्संस आस डी सुप्रीम फादर ऑफ ऑल लिविंग एंटीट्यूड्स ही डोंट इंटरफेयर विथ डेयर इंडिपेंडेंस बट गिव्स ऑल फैसिलिटीज सो डेट दे कैन फुलफिल डेट फुलफिल डी मटेरियल डिजायर समय आस व्हाइट डी ऑल पाफल गॉड गिव्स फैसिलिटीज तू डी लिविंग एंटीट्यूड्स फॉर एंजॉयिंग डी मटेरियल बर्ड्स एंड सो लेट्स डेम ऑल इन डी ट्रैप ऑफ डी इल्यूशरी एनर्जी डी आंसर इस डेट इफ डी सुप्रीम लॉर्ड आस डी सोल डोंट गिव सच फैसिलिटीज दें देयर इस नो मीनिंग ऑफ इंडिपेंडेंस देयर फॉर ही गिव्स एवरीवन फुल इंडिपेंडेंस व्हाटएवर वन लाइक बट डी अल्टीमेट इंस्ट्रक्शन वी फाइंड डी बघवत गीता वन शुड गिव अपऑल डी अदर इंगेजमेंट्स एंड फुली सरेंडर उन तू हिम डेट विल मेक डेमीगोर्ट अन सबोडिनेट तू डी विल ऑफ डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड डेयर फॉर डी लिविंग एंटीट्यूड कैन नॉट वरशिप डी डेमीगोर्ट बाय इस ओन डिजायर नॉर कैन डी डेमीगोर्ट बेस्ट तू एनी बेनिडिक्शन बिथ ऑफ डी सुप्रीम विल आस इट इस सेड नॉट अन ग्रेड ऑफ ग्रास मूव्स बिथ ऑफ डी विल ऑफ डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड जनरली पर्सन जो आर डिस्ट्रिक्ट इन डी मटेरियल बर्ड गो तू डी डेमीगोर्ट्स आस दे आर एडवाइस डी वेदिक लिटरेचर अन पर्सन वांटिंग सम पर्टिकुलर थिंग में वरशिप सच एंड सच डेमीगोर्ट फॉर एग्जांपल एट इसी पर्सन इस रिकमेंडेड तू वरशिप डी सन गॉड अन पर्सन वांटिंग एजुकेशन में वरशिप डी गोदर्स ऑफ A person wanting education may worship the goddess of learning Saraswati. And a person wanting a beautiful life may worship the goddess Uma, the wife of Lord Shiva. In this way, there are recommendations in the Shastras, Vedic scriptures for different modes of worship of different demigods. And because a particular living entity wants to enjoy a particular material facility, the Lord inspires him with a strong desire uh to achieve that benediction from that particular demigod and so he successfully receives the benediction. The particular mode of the devotional attitude of living entity towards a particular type of demigod is also arranged by the Supreme Lord. The demigods cannot infuse the living entities with such an affinity. But because he is the Supreme Lord or the super soul is present in the hearts of all the living entities, Krishna gives impetus to a man to worship certain demigods. The demigods are actually different parts of the universal body of the Supreme Lord. Therefore, they have no independence. The Vedic literature it is stated, the supreme personality of Godhead as super soul is also present within the heart of the demigod. Therefore, he arranges through the demigod to fulfill the desire of the living entity. But both the demigod and the living entity are dependent on the Supreme Lord. They are not independent.
Thank you, Madhaji.
Okay Krishna. Yeah, so very, very interesting here. That a living entity also cannot worship a demigod according to his own desire, right? Sometimes we see, the simple will say that I am, I like Lord Ganesha. I'm worshipping Lord Ganesha, but they don't realize that Prabhupada makes a very important point here. But even our faith to Lord Ganesha or whichever is the demigod that we are worshiping, even that is given by the Supreme Personality of Godhead. When we desire to worship a particular demigod, then the Lord arranges for our faith to be increased or established in that particular demigod. But the Lord gives this instruction. The Lord is not, uh, the Lord is not interfering with the free will or the independence of the living entity. The Lord has given us instruction that it is yajanti aavidi pura kam. It is not accepted. It is not proper to worship the devitas. Rather you worship me, that is a straightforward method instead of worshiping the devitas because the devitas cannot give you anything. Whatever the devitas give is, they are only the vaya media. I only ensure that to give it to the devitas who in turn pass it on to you, right? So in this way Krishna gives us, you know, ikvi vocal instructions in the Bhagavad Gita, but yet Krishna does not interfere with the uh with the uh the free will or the independence of the living entity. So in this way Krishna gives instructions and Krishna gives us the free will. So it is up to us what we want to follow and accordingly we will, if we worship the demigod for some some material benedictions, we get those benedictions, then we will have to, we have to enjoy those positive reactions, right? Because we are doing karma, right? Because we are following the Vedic scriptures, but we are doing something for our own sense enjoyment. So in this way, we will have to, uh, we'll have to take another body or we have to continue with our karmic cycle of getting plus points and minus points. We do something positive, we please the demigods, demigods are very pleased with us, they give, they want us to enjoy something, they give us something. We enjoy that and in the course of enjoyment, there is always suffering, there is never enjoyment in exclusivity in this material world. So as we enjoy and we suffer in this material world, we are only increasing our duration in this material world. That is why Krishna is saying, do not, do not go into all of those things, don't complicate your life, right? Simply engage in my devotional service, I will guide you how you can come back to me. In that way Krishna is guiding all of us, right? Um, raptatyate anyadeva kaaha, right? Kaame sthastihrta jyana. And why do people worship the demigods? Not that they want to, they have some love for the demigod, right? That they are attracted to the demigod, they don't have any desire. No, nobody worships the demigod, does not have a desire. Prabhupada clearly says, if someone wants to excel in the studies, they worship Saraswati Devi. If someone wants a nice husband or a wife, they worship Lord Shiva or Uma Devi or Parvati Devi like that. So there is always a deal, right? There is never uh that uh you know, somebody worships a demigod but without any uh without any reason for karma or without any reason for sense gratification. Because there may be one in a million, like we found in the case of the devotee of Lord Shiva, to whom, to who actually worshipped Lord Shiva without any uh desire for material gain. And that person was directed by Lord Shiva to Sanatana Goswami to get the ultimate benefit of being a devotee of the devotee of the Lord, right? Because britya, 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 right? Koleshekar Maharaj plays seven times, britya, britya, britya. Right? That means I want to become the servant of the servant of the servant of the servant of the Lord. Then why is it the Lord is saying you should not worship my servant? The Lord is saying you should not worship the servant, thinking the servant to be the Lord. That is what we should avoid. But we can worship the servant of the servant and in fact our mood should be that only. Instead of directly wanting to worship Radha and Krishna, our mood, because we are not, you are not qualified to worship the Supreme Lord directly. That is why we serve the servant of the servant of the servant of the servant of the Lord. And ultimately, you know, it passes, the mercy also flows down into Guru Parampra. And our, our pleasing, we, we please our immediate shiksha gurus, we please our diksha guru. We please and, and such kind of, you know, that pleasure giving satisfaction to our gurus also goes up the parampra and the mercy also flows down the Guru Parampra. It is not like, uh, you know, directly some torch light or something is, you know, wand is placed. It's not a magic wand that you place it and all your anartas are boom, gone. No, it does not work like that, right? Everything requires practice, sincerity, serious effort, sense, sincerity of purpose. Why, why are we doing what we are doing? So when you are doing it for the pleasure of the Lord, when you are doing it for the pleasure of Guru and Goranga, then the mercy flows down through the Guru Parampra. And our, and our efforts will see the results sooner if not, if not later, right? But Krishna says that shipram bhavati dharmatma, right? Somebody who is engaging in devotional service will get quickly purified, right? There is no, uh, there is no delay for a person who is sincere in devotional service. So that is our hope. Okay, let's move on. Yeah, so neither are the demigods independent to give any benediction nor are, um, nor are the living entities, uh, supreme, I mean, nor are the living entities completely independent to worship whomever they want. Whomever, that is, that a little bit of desire is there, free will is there. According to that, living entity decides whom I want to worship. The Lord gives a faith to the living entity, the Lord gives the benedictions to the living entity through the demigods. So in this way, the Lord is a stotra or the shrutra or the source of everything, alright? Next number twenty-two. Rajneesh Prabhu, go ahead.
Shtya shadhyayukta, shadhyayukta, dukkastya, radhanani, hati, lakti, dil, tata, saman, yai, veta. So he, here with that kadya inspiration, yukta endowed, kastya of that demigod, aradhana, aradhana for the worship. After he espoused, lakti obtained, uh, and pata from that, saman his desires, byah by he, Shiva alone, he had not arranged, he certainly saw gold, confliction. Endowed with such a faith, he endeavors to worship a particular demigod and obtains his desires, but in actuality, his benefits are just by me alone. But, but the demigods cannot award benediction to their devotees without the permission of the Supreme, Supreme Lord. The living entity in a project that everything is the property of the Godhead, but the demigods not forget. So the worship of demigods and the extent of desire, desires are due not to the demigods but to the Supreme Personality of Godhead. By a remnant, the less intelligent living entity shall not know this and therefore he physically goes to demigods for some benefit, but he chose Loki, then in spite of something, stays only to start asking for the material benefit. However, he is not a sign of a pure devotee. The living entity goes to demigods usually because he is at to fulfill his lusts. This happens, then something undue is desired by the living entity and the Lord shall, does not fulfill the desire. In the Chaitanya Kamrit, it is said that one who worships a demigod and at the same time desires material enjoyment is contradictory in his desires for devotional service to the Lord. And the worship of a demigod cannot be on the platform or worship of a demigod is material and devotional service to the Supreme Lord is completely for living, for the living entity who desires to run, who desires to, who desires to return to Godhead, material desires are impeded. A pure devotee of the Lord is therefore not awarded the material benefit desired by less intelligent who therefore prefer to worship demigods or rather than a case of
Yeah, so a, an intelligent person, yajanti he is who made a saha. Right? What are the most intelligent people do? They engage in the worship of the Supreme Personality of Godhead, Lord Shri Krishna, yajanti he is who made a saha. Because, uh, because we know that when the material desires are fulfilled, then misery actually starts. How is that? Because material, whatever objects of sense enjoyment that we get, it is bound to get destroyed. It is bound to be taken away at some time or the other. Then maybe we want something, we get it, but then it is not permanent, it has to go away someday, right? And we discussed the other day, the extent to which a particular material object can give us pleasure, to that extent or to much, much higher extent, the same object can give us pain, can give us suffering. Right? That is why an intelligent person does not enjoy the, uh, the possession of a material object or does not enjoy the, uh, the, the, you know, uh, does not want to ask the Lord for materials and gratification. Because, uh, you know, what is that verse? Aaviantavantakonteyana teishu ramate budaha, right? In Bhagavad Gita Krishna, Krishna Houndi says, right? Um, all of these material pleasures, they have an adhi and an anta, they have a beginning and an and na teishu ramate budaha. Budaha means intelligent people, they don't, they don't take any ramanta. Ramanta means, rama means pleasure, ramantiyayoginonante, right? So they don't take any pleasure in, uh, in actually enjoying or utilizing or exploiting these sense objects. Knowing very well that they have a beginning and an end. Yehi sams prashya jaap hoga dukkayone evate, right? Beautiful verse by Lord Shri Krishna himself, he says, yehi sams prashya, that means by touching the material objects or by feeling pleasure by enjoying the material objects, yehi sams prashya jaap hoga. Boga means enjoyment for oneself. What is it? What does it entail? Dukkayone evate, right? What does it entail? It entails only suffering. Why? Because although it may give a little bit of pleasure, right? Such kind of pleasure have a beginning and an end and hence an intelligent person is not, uh, is not interested in enjoying such temporary benefits, right? That's exactly what is the crux of this particular verse, right? And that is why devotees even consider material desires as impediments, right? Because sometimes we get something and we get so much carried away by it that, uh, that we are not, not able to practice devotional service with enthusiasm, right? So that is why devotees, very serious devotees, they consider even desires as uh, material desires as impediments in the process of bhakti, in the process of advancement of bhakti or devotional service. Yeah, let's move ahead. Next number twenty-three. Okay, Lila Nandini Maathji, go ahead. Antavan tu falam te shaam, tad bhavati alpam eda sam, devan devaya jo yanti, mat bhakta yanti maam api. Madhaji, unmute yourself. Hare Krishna. Okay, Sudha Madhaji, unmute yourself.
Yes, Madhaji. Hare Krishna. Antavatu falam te shaam, tad bhavati alpam eda sam, devan devaya jo yanti, mat bhakta yanti maam api. Sinolans, antavat perishable, tu but palam fruit, te shaam, they are, tat that bhavati becomes alpam eda sam of those of small intelligence, devan to the demigods, devayaja, the worshippers of the demigods, yanti go, mat my, bhakta devotees, yanti go, maam, to me, api also. Translation and perpet by Divine Grace Shila Prabhupada, Shila Prabhupada Kijay. Men of small intelligence worship the demigods and their fruits are limited and temporary. Those who worship the demigods go to the planets of the demigods, but my devotees ultimately reach my supreme planet, perpet. Some commentators on the Bhagavad Gita say that one who worships a demigod can reach a supreme lord. But here it is clearly stated that the worshippers of demigods go to the different planetary systems where various demigods are situated, just as a worshipper of the sun achieves the sun or a worshipper of the demigod of the moon achieves the moon. Similarly, if anyone wants to worship a demigod like Indra, he can attain that particular god's planet. It is not that everyone, regardless of whatever demigod his worship, will reach the supreme personality of Godhead. That is denied here, for it is clearly stated that the worshippers of demigods go to different planets in the material world, but the devotee of the Supreme Lord goes directly to the supreme planet of the personality of Godhead. Here the point may be raised that if the demigods are different parts of the body of the Supreme Lord, then the same end should be achieved by worshiping them. However, worshippers of the demigods are less intelligent because they don't know to what part of the body food must be supplied. Some of them are so foolish that they claim that there are many parts and many ways to supply food. This isn't very sanguine. Can anyone supply food to the body through the ears or eyes? They do not know that these demigods are different parts of the universal body of the Supreme Lord and in their ignorance, they believe that each and every demigod is a separate god and a competitor of the Supreme Lord. Not only are the demigods parts of the Supreme Lord, but ordinary living entities are also. In the Shrimad Bhagavatam, it is stated that the Brahmanas are the head of the Supreme Lord, the Shatryas are his arms, the Vaishyas are his waist, the Shutras are his legs and all serve different functions. Regardless of the situation, if one knows that both the demigods and he himself are part and parcel of the Supreme Lord, his knowledge is perfect. But if he does not understand, he achieves, if he, if he does not understand this, he achieves different planets where the demigods reside. This is not the same destination the devotee reaches. The results achieved by the demigods' benedictions are perishable. Because within this material world, the planets, the demigods and their worshippers are all perishable. Therefore, it is clearly stated in this verse that all results achieved by worshiping the demigods that, uh, all results achieved by worshiping demigods are perishable and therefore such worship is performed by the less intelligent living entity. Because a pure devotee engaged in Krishna consciousness in devotional service of the Supreme Lord achieves eternal blissful existence that is full of knowledge. His achievements and those of the common worshipper of the demigods are different. The Supreme Lord is unlimited, his favor is unlimited, his mercy is unlimited. Therefore, the mercy of the Supreme Lord upon his pure devotees is unlimited. Thank you, Madhaji. Hare Krishna.
Yeah, yanti deva vrida devan, pitran nyanthi pitravata, bhutaani yanti bhute bhutejya, yanti mat yaajinobi maam. Where Krishna says, if you worship the demigods, you will go to the planet of the demigods. If you worship the four fathers, you go to the planet of the four fathers. Yanti mat yaajinobi maam, and if you worship me, you will come to my planet. That's what Krishna is saying. Right? Here also the same thing is specified here, right? Um, the answer is explained, Prabhupada explains in one lecture. If you take a train, uh, to, if you, if you take a train that's going from Mumbai to Delhi, then you will reach Delhi. If you take a train from Mumbai to Bangalore, you will reach Bangalore. But what the Mayavati say, any train you take, right? Any path you take, you will go to the Supreme Personality of Godhead. That is very foolish. That doesn't happen even in the material world, isn't it? If we take a train and, and you know, any train and then, and then you say, I want to go to Bangalore. And then you take a train, uh, which goes to Delhi and hardly you will even to go to Bangalore. You will go Delhi and then you will find a way to go to Bangalore from there, right? It's a roundabout way. There is a direct way to where you want to reach. And then we need to simply follow that path and reach there, okay? Because less intelligent, that's why it's mentioned, less intelligent people, right? They think that anywhere, whichever train I catch, I will go to wherever I want, right? So that is extremely foolish. Prabhupada gives this example of a train in one of his lectures. Very, very simple to understand, but people make things very, very complicated. That I will worship any demigod and I will reach but the Supreme Personality of Godhead. Aray nayi okaya sah, right? Because you are worshiping the demigod to acquire something, even that, uh, that requires proper worship of the demigod. Even that will not get, otherwise, right? That's why, uh, there is this beautiful, uh, you know, pastime, even in Bhagavad Gita. You know, it is mentioned how, um, this, um, Rishi Shringa, actually performs, no, not Rishi Shringa, this Vritrasura, huh? So even Vritrasura is actually created by using, uh, by, by performing a yajna, isn't it?
No.
Uh, that, yes, sorry? Hmm, yeah, so, um, I thought somebody was saying something. Saying that yajna, Indra was performing, what is that, Vishwarupa, I guess, his name. I don't know. He is performing a yajna for on behalf of Indra to actually get, um, to actually, huh?
Meeting ka kuchh bola nahi.
Who is unmuted? Okay. So what is he saying? Uh, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, I don't know. I don't remember the names exactly, but what I've heard is, uh, in this particular pastime, this, uh, this sage actually is employed by Indra to actually create a demon who will be, who will kill Indra. But he says some, uh, you know, pronunciation mistake. Asa ho jata hai ki that demon which is created is going to kill Indra and not killed by, can be killed by him, right? So it's very dangerous, right? But the only safe mantra is Hare Krishna Mahamitra, right? Some of them, Prabhupada only says, some of them cannot pronounce r, right? And especially in, you know, Malaysia, Indonesian or they cannot, they pronounce r as l or something. Krishna Krishna, hare hare, hale hale, something is something, right? But Krishna is only bhavad rahi, right? If you don't pronounce the word properly also, but if you're able to pronounce, you should pronounce properly. You should not think that, you know, you can pronounce anything and Krishna will accept. But for people genuinely who cannot pronounce certain words, right? The Hare Krishna Mahamitra is the safest mantra. Even if you say Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, whatever we say. But as long as our mood is, oh Krishna, O Srimati, Radha Rani, please engage me in your service. Can Krishna accept the bhava and there are no side effects, there are no, uh, there are no, uh, what do you call, negative repercussions of chanting the Hare Krishna Mahamitra. Like in this case, we saw that yajna, uh, you know, the benefit was just the opposite of what it was supposed to be. That a demon who was supposed to, uh, who was supposed to be, who was supposed to kill Indra became the one who is going to be killed by Indra, right? So in this way, uh, very dangerous, uh, these, some of these karma kanda mantras, which are there in the Vedic scriptures, uh, which prescribe certain mantras to be chanted and will get some material benedictions, very dangerous. Because if we chant the mantra somewhere wrongly, then what happens? It will give us the opposite effect. And we would rather be better off not having chanted that mantra and we are actually placing our sense in a worse situation. So in this way, we have to be very careful which mantra we are chanting. Yeah, Vritrasura, correct. Okay, let's move ahead. Next number twenty-four. Okay, so let's, okay, let me share my screen first, right? Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Yeah, text number twenty-four. Okay, Lila Nandini Maathji, are you there?
Yes, Madhaji. Hare Krishna, Dandatpranam.
Hare Krishna, Dandatpranam, yes, Madhaji, go ahead.
Next number twenty-four. Avektam, vektim, abanam, manyandemam, abuddhaya, parambam, majanandom, avayam, anuttamam, sinonams. Avektam, non-manifested, vektim, personality, abanam, achieved, manyandem, think, maam, me, abuddhaya, less intelligent persons. Param supreme, bhavam, existence, ajanand, I thought knowing, mama, my, avayam, imperishable, anuttamam, the finest. Translation and perpret by Shilpa, Shilpa Swamiji Prabhupada Kijay. Anintelligent person, men who do not know me perfectly think that I, the Supreme Personality of Godhead Krishna was impersonal before and have now assumed this personality. Due to this small knowledge, they do not know my higher nature, which is imperishable and supreme. But those who are worshippers of demigods have been described as less intelligent persons. And here the impersonals are similarly described. Lord Krishna, in his personal form, he is here speaking before Arjuna and still due to ignorance, impersonals argue that the Supreme Lord ultimately has no form. Yamunacharya, a great devotee of the Lord in the disciplic succession of Ramanujanacharya has written a very appropriate verse in this connection. He says, thamsi, sila rupacharidha parama parakshidaha, satvina satvikadaya prava, lasta shashrit, sastry, prakrtyattha deva paramarthavidam madaischam, nevaasuraprakthaya prabavanti bodam. My dear Lord, devotees like Vyasa Deva and Narada know you to be the personality of Godhead. By understanding different Vedic literatures, one can come to know your characteristics, your form and your activities and one can thus understand that you are the Supreme Personality of Godhead. But those who are in the mores of passion and ignorance, the demands, the non-devotees cannot understand you. They are unable to understand you. However, experts such non-devotees may be in discussing Vedanta and the Upanishads and other Vedic literatures, it is not possible for them to understand the personality of Godhead, stotarathna twelve. In the Brahma Samita, it is stated that the personality of Godhead cannot be understood simply by study of the Vedanta literature. Only by the mercy of the Supreme Lord can this personality of the Supreme be known. Therefore, in this verse, it is clearly stated that not only are the worshippers of the demigods less intelligent, but those non-devotees who are engaged in Vedanta and speculation of Vedic literature without any tinge of true Krishna consciousness are also less intelligent. And for them, it is not possible to understand God's personal nature. Persons who are under the impression that the absolute truth is impersonal is, are described as abuddhaya, which means those who do not know the ultimate feature of the absolute truth. In the Shrimad Bhagavatam, it is stated that supreme realization begins from the impersonal Brahman and then rises to the circle of super soul, but the ultimate word in the absolute truth is the personality of Godhead. Modern impersonals are still less intelligent, for they do not even follow their great predecessor Shankaracharya, who has specifically stated, Madhaji, specifically stated that Krishna is the Supreme Personality of Godhead. Impersonals therefore are not knowing the supreme truth, think Krishna to be the only the son of Devaki and Vasudevah or a prince or a powerful living entity. This is also condemned in the Bhagavad Gita, chapter nine to eleven. Abajanandi maam muda, manushim danva shridam. Only the fools regard me as an ordinary person. The fact is that no one can understand Krishna without rendering devotional service and without developing Krishna consciousness. The Bhagavatam, ten point fundamental ingredient confirms this.
Hare Krishna, Madhaji, we are just approaching one thirty. So I was just thinking, have Kishori Madhaji to continue the perpet and complete it and then we can start.
The next word. Thank you, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna, thank you, Madhaji. Alright, uh, so let me share my screen again. So here until, until this point, very beautifully it is said, abajananti maam muda, manushim danva shridam, right? So fools only, a buddhaya, right? Prabhupada makes a very, uses a very beautiful word here, a buddhaya. A buddhaya means those who don't have intelligence. Buddhi means intelligence. Buddhaya means somebody who has intelligence. A buddhaya means somebody who does not have intelligence. Who, what does that person consider? That person considers either the failure of the Lord as the, as the supermost or they consider the paramatma form as a supermost. They don't understand that, uh, the Lord, which is, um, you know, Adan Pradhan that he does, of his pranjalanti features, who is the Supreme Personality of Godhead. That personality of Godhead is the supremest feature of the Supreme Personality of Godhead. That's why even Shankaracharya, initially he was spreading Mayavatism. But finally, at the last instruction of Shankaracharya also was, bade go vindham, bade go vindham. Go vindham, bade mooda mati, in fact, he said, samprathte sannite kaale, nahinahi rakshati dukrim karane. Nahinahi rakshati, there is no other protection that we can expect other than serving, bade go vindham, bade go vindham, go vindham, bade mooda mati. Right? Oh foolish person, there is no other protection other than rendering service unto go vinda. That is the last instruction given by Shankaracharya himself, right? And Krishna also tells the same thing, that only the fools disregard me when I appear on this earth as a human being to fulfill certain purposes, right? Alright, so let's quickly read the last part of it. Okay, there's quite a, quite a big pervert. So from twenty-five, we will read our next Monday. Tomorrow and Friday we will do. Oh, sorry, today is Friday. Okay, I got a little confused with the days now. Okay, okay. So Monday, Tuesday we will do TLC and then next Wednesday we will continue with seven point twenty-five. Now let me share my screen and let's quickly ask Nup Kishori Madhaji. To read the remaining part of the pervert. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Sorry, devotees, there's some problem. My laptop has become so slow, taking so long, eternity to open a screen. Sorry, devotees, there's some problem, laptop has become so slow, taking so long, eternity to open a screen. Okay, now Kishori Madhaji, go ahead, the fact is that no one can understand Krishna.
Sure, Madhaji, Hare Krishna, Dhanur Pranam, Madhaji. The fact is that no one can understand Krishna without we, without rendering devotion service and without developing Krishna consciousness. The Bhagavatam ten point fourteen point twenty-nine confirms that, atapite deva padma, padma bhujadavya, prasadale sansgru, lesangruhitae vahi, jjanati tattvam bhagavata, bhagwanam himno, irnachanya ekopi chira, chirama vichinava, vichinava. One, my lord, if one is favored by, even a slight trace of mercy, trace of the mercy of your lotus feet, he can understand the greatness of your personality, but those who speculate to understand the supreme personality of Godhead are unable to know you, even though they continue to study the Vedas for many years, one cannot understand the supreme personality of Godhead Krishna or his form, quality or name simply by mental speculation or by discussing Vedic literature. One must understand him by devotional service. When one is fully engaged in the Krishna consciousness, beginning by chanting the Mahamatra, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. Then only can one understand supreme personality, the supreme personality of Godhead. Non-devotees impersonalist think that Krishna has a body made of this material nature and that all his activities, his form and everything are Maya. These impersonalist are known as Maya Vatis, they do not know the ultimate truth. The twenty-eight verse three early states, kamkamaisa taita taira rita, vina, vina, na, prapan dyate, nyaya deva, devataha. Those who are blinded by lusty desire surrender and to the different demigods, it is accepted that besides the supreme personality of Godhead, there are demigods who have their different planets and the lord also has a planet, as said in the twenty-third verse, devan deva, yaju yanti, mat bhakta yanti, mama api. The worshippers of the demigods go to the different planets of the demigods and those who are devotees of Lord Krishna go to the Krishna Loka planet. Although this is clearly stated that, stated the foolish impersonalist still maintain that the lord is formless and that these forms are impositions. From the study of the Gita, does it appear that the demigods and their awards are impersonal? Clearly, neither the demigods nor Krishna, the supreme personality of Godhead are impersonal. They are all persons, Lord Krishna is the supreme personality of Godhead and he has his own planet and the demigods have theirs. Therefore, the monistic contention, the ultimate truth is formless and the form is imposed, does not hold true. It is clearly stated here that is not imposed. From the Bhagavad Gita, we can clearly understand that the form of the demigods and the form of the supreme lord is cementiously existing and that Lord Krishna is Satchidananda, eternal blissful knowledge. The Vedic literature confirms that the supreme absolute truth is knowledge and blissful pleasure. Viknanam anandam brahman, brahad, aranyaka upanishad, three point nine point twenty-eight. And that he is a reservoir of unlimited auspicious quality. Ananta kalyana gunatma ko, so Vishnu Purana six point five point eighty-four. And in the Gita, the lord says that although he is aja, unbound, he still appears. These are the facts that we should understand from the Bhagavad Gita. We cannot understand how the supreme personality of Godhead can be impersonal, the imposition theory of the impersonalist. Monist is false as far as the statements of the Gita are concerned. It is clear here in that the supreme absolute truth, Lord Krishna, has both form and personality. Hare Krishna, Madhaji, thank you. Dhanur Pranam, Madhaji.
Realizations of the absolute truth. Patanti ta tattva vikas, tattum yajana mat payam, brahmeti paramatmeti, bhagavaniti shaktite. So we can understand the supreme personality of Godhead in three levels. One is the lowest level of realization is the Brahman realization. Where we understand that, you know, that deflection of the supreme personality of Godhead, that is what is all in all. And I can join, I can become merged in that deflection and then I will be freed from all of the hankeries and lamentations that are associated with this material body, I will get liberated from that. And that's not a very nice stage to be in because one cannot eternally stay there. Because from there also one has to fall down because there is no, there is no ananda, there is no chit also, there is no knowledge also there, there is no complete knowledge, only there is eternity. That means we are all souls and hence we are eternal, like that of the supreme personality of Godhead. There is only the third aspect that is understood in this particular realization. Second one is realizing the lord is paramatma who is situated in everybody's heart. Of course, Kirtika Shah, Vishnu is situated in our heart, right? But we have placed our selves such that we cannot even understand the presence of the lord in our heart, right? But the great devotees, they see, vidya vini sampanne, brahmane gavi haski nishuni, chay vasva pa ke cha, pandita samadarshana. If you are devotees to the lord, they see everything. Stavari jangame deke deke taram urti, that means they see everything in relation to the supreme personality of Godhead. But yet they also understand only the certain chit aspects. The ananda aspect is still not realized, so what is it, ananda aspect? The ananda aspect is realized by understanding that the lord is the supreme personality of Godhead. I am the servant of the lord, I should serve the lord, when I serve the lord, the bliss that is experienced and the lord is satisfied, that bliss cannot be compared or cannot be experienced by attaining anything or everything in this material world, that bliss cannot be attained in this material world, right? The happiness of, or the bliss of rendering devotional service is the highest, that is realized only by a devotee. So with this, we will let's come to an end of today's study. We'll do Harnam Sankirtan, devotees keep on your cameras, we'll see you are all there and if anybody has any question or queries or comments, you may raise your hands and then we'll take it forward.